Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabados of Delmar, together with my co-host, Mark Ronitcher, statewide news service, J Business Tech Philly dot com, and now columnist for the Jewish Press.
Yes Rabbi, thank you for that introduction. We have a very special guest with us today. His name's John Friedman. And I didn't realize how long you've been a member of the Hudson City Council, but I'm glad you drove up to Albany to be our guest today. It's a real privilege and pleasure.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
So, how many years have you been on the Hudson City Council?
Four, this is my fifth year now.
This is your fifth year?
Yes.
And how many, how much longer before your term is up?
I have another two years, a year and three quarters, and that'll be the end of it.
They're four-year terms?
They're two-year terms.
Two-year terms.
Mm-hmm, short periods.
You know, John, maybe within a minute or two, you know, I live in, obviously, the capital district here, but yeah, I'll tell you the truth, when I go to Hudson, I'm a prison rabbi to the Hudson Correctional, because I go through Hudson for that, they have a facility there. Tell us about the city, what they are, what's the major industry? I mean, I just fly through there, and I really don't know that much, and I'm sure our viewers, you know, maybe know obviously about Hudson, but what is it, what makes it up? How many people? What's the industry?
Sure, well, it's a relatively small city. It's only about two square miles. And it has, I think, sixty-five hundred populations, very small. We skew a little younger than the surrounding county. And our number-one industry, I would say, is creative work. We have the most creative, the largest number of creative self-employed people. We're the third-largest concentration in the country after Taos, New Mexico, and Brooklyn.
What do you mean creative, but like art?
Artists, working artists, writers, filmmakers, designers, decorators, people involved in the creative economy.
How did that come about? I mean, you know, I know Woodstock, when I think of creative and art, I would, if you ask me a city, I'd say Woodstock.
Sure.
But how did Hudson get to that?
Hudson was a victim of urban renewal in the seventies. And as a result, the downtown was pretty much deserted by the early nineteen eighties. And property values tanked. The city was then discovered by antique dealers. And I think in the mid-eighties, the first art gallery opened. Now, I think there's over thirty art galleries on the one-mile-long Main Street.
Which is Warren Street.
Warren Street, yeah. And it just attracted more and more people. It just became a self-generating sort of engine of creativity. And a lot of people are moving in. And the, like I said earlier, the median age is starting to go down. The fastest-growing group now is twenty-eight to thirty-nine-year-olds. And we're seeing a lot of baby carriages on Warren Street.
Isn't that nice?
For the first time in a long time, yeah, it's very nice.
You know, I went to a couple of festivals that were in Hudson, and they, I did see, you know, a lot of baby carriages. I was walking more in the street than in the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty vital community. And that's what attracted me and my wife to it.
How many years ago?
Only eight years ago, just eight years ago.
From where?
From New York City. We lived in Greenwich Village for about twenty-five years. And we actually found the really creative community we were looking for in the village when we moved to Hudson. It's a very vital place. I enjoy being there a great deal. I enjoy working on the city council, although it's fairly frustrating at the same time.
Well, getting you involved is interesting, because some people say, "Oh, I was there for twenty-five years," you know, because Mark and I have so many politicians on the show, and it's interesting their history, but you're kind of new, and immediately you jumped into the government.
Yeah, I didn't want to. I was asked by a woman who had the seat before me, who was moving up to the county legislature, we call the Board of Supervisors.
So she didn't like you, so she asked you?
I guess not. When I think back on it, she might not have, but she asked me if I would be willing to run in her stead, and my initial reaction was I didn't want to do it. And I was busy, and I had just moved there three years before. But I decided that I would do it, because she kind of convinced me. And I've been, well, well-received, I guess, since I got there. And I can, I, I understand how people feel when there's someplace and then people come in. I mean, you know, the, I think the history of people moving out of New York City is essentially that, people being displaced from where they were for economic reasons, or one reason or another.
Yeah, a lot of people in Columbia County, you hear about a lot of people even going to the underaround, they just had enough in New York City, and
Yeah.
They want a little bit of a backyard. I say they're with my kids in Brooklyn. Don't you want a backyard for your kids already or something?
Exactly, and, and it's just much easier to live in a small city than it is in a large city. And maybe I didn't notice that for many years until I first came up into Columbia County as a visitor.
And you could jump on the Amtrak out of Hudson and Dean, New York, two hours later.
Yeah, and that drives a lot of what happens in Hudson, too, because there's a lot of folks who use Hudson as a weekend getaway. They don't need a car, they can get to Penn Station after work in the city, two hours later exactly, you're in Hudson. If you drive it, you can't do it any faster. You don't have to pay for parking if you're going down, so it is really an economic way to get around, it's very comfortable.
Low crime rate?
Yeah, I mean, it's a small city. Most of our crime is property crime. Two people get into a fight, and somebody, you know, breaks somebody else's cellphone or knocks their TV over, and
But murder rates are down, I mean, they don't
Yeah, I think there was a murder in late 2015. That was the murder for the year, maybe so far, not, yeah, this decade, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, so, pretty, pretty low. It's a very safe place. I never feel uncomfortable anywhere
Right.
in the city. It's very small.
What's your, I know you have the Hudson Opera
The Opera House is there, yep. And it's, I think, the oldest continuing operation opera house in the state. And it's a focal point for cultural events, art shows, there are a lot of workshops for children in the arts and in writing. There is some exercise classes, I think, that take place there.
I went to see a play there, I think it was a year or two ago.
Yeah, and they just got a large grant from the state
Thank you, D.D. Barrett?
Thank you, yeah, everybody involved, D.D. Barrett, probably our senator as well, and certainly the grant writers there
Yeah.
who got it. And now they're, that's going to restore the second floor, which is the large auditorium, and provide an elevator, so it'll be completely handicapped, accessible, which we're looking forward to.
Yeah, I went up there, that upstairs needs a lot of work.
A lot of work, you know, but
I snuck in, because there's a rope that says, "Do not."
Yeah, and when you get up there, you can see why. It's, it's pretty raw space and kind of a construction nightmare, but it's going to be restored to the way it was, I believe.
That's wonderful.
You know, Hudson is very focused on its architecture. Nothing is ever torn down in the city, really, very little anyway, and so
You know, it's interesting, this phenomenon all around the United States, because like we were talking about New York City, you know, and I, you know, I've been around for a long time, and if I'd say someone come down Brooklyn would be the Bautch Rebbe's headquarters. "Rabbi, you want to get me killed? What are you, going to Brooklyn? This is like thirty years ago."
Right.
And now it's the place to be. So it's this phenomenon, Troy is like that, you know, we have so many people from the area, again, on The Jewish View, they're saying it's a boom town. It's interesting, all these, they hit their low, low point, like you're saying, Hudson, and now it's becoming the place to be.
Well, I moved to Albany in nineteen eighty-two to go to college, and, and at orientation, they told us, "Go anywhere you want, but don't go to Hudson."
Oh, really?
Yeah, absolutely, that was, I, I remember it very clearly, and it was because of the crime, and Hudson was very bad. I don't know if it was particularly violent, but there were a lot of drugs. The city was, was known for its drugs, which was in the wake of its main, you know, indigenous industry after whaling, which was prostitution and gambling. It was a pretty notorious open city, and, and all through the eighteen hundreds and most of the twentieth century, until the state police shut it down in the fifties. It had some resurgence through the eighties into the nineties, but more with corruption than with, with quasi-legal gambling or prostitution. Now, I'm pretty sure we're past those days, and like I said, it's really, it's about the creative work that goes on there, music and the art, fine art, and performance art as well.
Excellent, you know, it's good to see these, you know, picking, these cities picking themselves up. I remember again, and that, you know, these cities, oh, New York City is going to be a wasteland, and no one's ever going to live there, crime-ridden, you know, it just, to me, it's so refreshing to see these cities that people gave up on, and they're, you know
Having a resurgence.
Yeah.
Sure.
You majored in political science, a bachelor's in political science at University of Albany.
I did.
Did you have Al Magid as your teacher?
No, I don't think so. Most of my studies when I was
Did you have Bernie John Paul, or?
No, Eric Hoffman, I spent a lot of time with Eric Hoffman. It was the, kind of the, we thought the high point of the Soviet empire was really the low point, nobody realized it until suddenly it was gone. But my, my focus was on Soviet studies and Russian studies, and then three years after I graduated, there was no more Soviet Union, so
Now what do you do?
But now maybe there will be again, so who knows?
No, no, no. So then you got your JD, your law degree from Cardozo School of Law at Yeshiva University. Did that draw you back to any sort of Judaism or religion, or did that, no?
No, I say that
Of all the schools, why'd you choose that one?
It chose me.
Oh. It wasn't the only one you got into?
No, no, I applied to two schools, I got into both. Cardozo, the dean at the time was a gentleman by the name of Monroe Price, who was a, kind of a leading policy person in the United States of the development around cable television and then ancillary broadcast news and regulation. And I came from the cable TV industry. And so, he was very interested in my cable background. I was very interested in staying in New York City if I could, and the school was in New York City. So it worked out well for both of us, I guess. And it's, it's, it's a, it is part of Yeshiva University, but it does kind of behave as a secular school. That being said, there were, you know, a real Jewish twist to
Well, and my son actually mentored graduate at Cardozo, and this idea that there's no classes on Jewish holidays, so you kind of feel that it's
Yeah, yeah, and all your classes are over by Friday at noon, which was nice. And the library was closed on Saturday, so you had an excuse to not study, which was kind of nice, until it came time to finals, and you're in your first year, and everybody's freaking out, but you get past that, and now, you know, thirty years later, I don't care. But, you know, there were, you know, that raised some other issues, though, because for the students, I'd say, for some of the students, the school was open on Christmas, and it was open on Easter Sunday, but all of the people, the service people who worked at the school were Christian. So they were forced to work on their high holidays, while the Jewish students were kind of forced not to work on their, on their, you know, on their Sabbath, really, and in the high holidays, of course. I mean, basically, the month of October was every other day off, which we all appreciated. And, and most of the student body, I'd say, when I was there, was Jewish, and most of it was observant. I think that that's really changed. I haven't been to the school in about a year, but it's much more cosmopolitan, it's a lot more integrated of a school now. And I don't know if they still have some of the tensions, like being told that they couldn't have a jack-o'-lantern in the school newspaper office, which I think upset the Jews more than it upset the one or two Christians who were there. But you can understand it. I mean, it was a Jewish school, and everybody knew that going in. On the other hand, my good friend Patrick, who was an ex-New York City cop, brought in a bacon, egg, and cheese sandwich every morning, and he would put it on his, where we were sitting in whatever classroom we were in that morning, and he would just let it sit there, until it cooled, and then he would eat it. And that was his bit of rebellion. I don't know exactly what he was rebelling against. Perhaps it was the cafeteria, which was pretty poor.
And it was kosher?
It was kosher, it was
And the, and the aroma from the bacon on the bacon, egg, and cheese sandwich
Was his
was the rebellion.
That was his, yeah, that was his Irish Catholic hackles getting up, I guess, but he stuck around for three years and got his degree.
So you had, so you sit on, what, three committees?
I do.
On the Hudson City Council. Arts, entertainment, and tourism, that's one committee.
Yes.
Finance
Yes.
and then economic development.
Indeed.
They seem to all come together, and because in order, you know, economic development is the heart of Hudson when it comes to arts, entertainment, and tourism. And then the finance, you got to deal with the budget.
Sure.
So talk to us more about that, and what your expertise is with that, because I don't see a business background in
Oh, well, I, yeah, I don't know what you're looking at in terms of what my background is, but I, I, I started a telephone company in my third year of law school.
Century Communications.
Century Communications, right, and I, I, once we were funded, about a year after I graduated, I ended up running that company for many years, until it was purchased by a public company. And then I became the CEO of the public company, and then the public company went into bankruptcy, when all the other telecom companies went bankrupt in 2000. But my background was pretty much mostly in, in business until 2000.
What did Century Communications do?
Well, Century Communications was, was a cable TV company.
It was.
The company I founded, actually, was Empire One Telecommunications, and it was a telephone company. And we, we were the largest Chinese-language advertiser in North America, I believe, in nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, something like that, maybe longer, but I stopped paying attention. And we primarily focused on the Chinese-language market in North America. And we had a hundred and twenty Chinese-speaking operators working out of a call center in Manhattan.
For the Chinamen in America, you're saying?
For people, Chinese people in the, in the United States and Canada, who had a business or family in China. And in the, in the nineties, a minute of long-distance, back in the days when there was a thing called long-distance telephone service, a minute from New York to Beijing was three dollars a minute.
Really?
We could buy it for under a dollar, so we decided to sell it for two. And we made a lot of minutes up that way. And it was a fairly successful business, until the bottom fell out of the telecom business.
So, and, you know, Joe Bruno came out of the telecom business also.
Yeah, he was on the equipment side, I was on the service side.
Yeah, he had Coradian.
Right.
So he made, his net worth went up, and yours went up, too?
Well, I don't know, I mean, we made a lot of money while we were making money, while there was money to be made. It was really an artificial industry. The long-distance business was really just an arbitrage. And we, we had one of our three partners, who was just very good at that, and another one who was really good at technology.
Did you
And that was me.
Did you invest, did you invest well?
No.
No?
No, no, I was drinking too much of my own Kool-Aid at the time, I'm afraid.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So, and, okay, well
And there was Rule 144, which kind of kept us from diversifying very efficiently, which, you know, keeps insiders from selling off their stock. So we were, we were kind of caught between a rock and a hard place, my three partners and I, and a lot of our investors. But we'd paid back our investors many times, you know, over the years.
And what's this Slow Money Alliance?
Well, Slow Money is really, it's a, it's a philosophy about, I think, business and businesses' place in life, and in the community, and how things can be right-sized or wrong-sized for what they're, what you're trying to do. And Slow Money was really, came out of the experiences of a lot of investment bankers and people who did a lot of investment banking and deal-making, where the velocity of money was staggeringly fast, trillions of dollars a day moving around, and nobody really knows where it's coming from, or where it's going, or it lands at night, because of course, tonight is somebody else's tomorrow morning, so it never really stops. And people invest through their 401Ks at work, or through mutual funds, or indexed funds, or just, you know, through their own trading accounts, in public equities and debt, and they don't know what's being done with that money. And people who have an interest in what is being done with the money, how it's being invested, where it's being invested, what the outcomes are, not just financial, not strictly financial, began to think about ways to try and change how investment is done. And Slow Money is just the rubric, I think. It's a slippery concept, for sure. It's just this rubric, and it's a group of people who essentially come together about every eighteen months, different parts of the country, to talk and think about these concepts. How do you, how do you take money from a community that's spare cash? How do you turn around and efficiently invest it into businesses that serve that community, that are located in that community? Where, without the transaction costs eating up the capital, because many small businesses don't need thirty million dollars, they wouldn't know what to do with it. They don't need three, wouldn't know necessarily what to do with that. And, you know, as you start getting down into these smaller raises, the cost of the lawyers and the accountants, and whoever else is passing judgment or trying to guide the entrepreneurs through these particular minefields, starts to mount very quickly, and they can eat up
Sure.
the value of the deal. And, you know, the old saw was that you, nobody raises below five million, because the transaction costs will just eat it up. And Slow Money is an attempt to try and figure out solutions to those particular problems. And it, it, there's, there's no office, well, there is, but there's no place, there's no
It's a virtual
It's a virtual sort of, and it's a, and it means a lot of different things, I think, to different people. I've been around it since it started. It was started by a very smart, thoughtful person named Woody Tash, who is an investment banker and an angel investor, and a highly talented CFO, I believe, and a fund manager, and who realized that all this money moving around and all these fees weren't doing anybody a whole lot of good. And he was trying to figure out a way to change that, and this was his approach. And, and it may, I think it works in certain instances, and I try to, to, to focus my work on it. I'm very, I like working for, for clients, I'm a corporate lawyer, I like my clients to be focused on place, wherever that place is, wherever they are. That's where they want to do things. They want to build a business, employ people, reinvest in their communities, they want to help the school districts, they want to build an opera house, or restore an opera house, to have a cultural center in their community, they want to try and figure out what their communities lack, and figure out ways to, to, to solve that. There are a variety of other organizations, which are much more concrete, such as Bally, that, that kind of work in the same area.
Well, you, you might not agree with the Wall Street phrase by Michael Douglas, that greed is good, you say greed is not good.
Well, I mean, listen, self-interest is always good, to a point.
No, but you want to give, you, you're looking for corporations that give back to the community.
I'm looking for corporations that understand that their best interest is served by
Right.
serving their own communities.
That's right, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so in that sense, yes, absolutely. But it, I, it can easily be self-motivated.
Do you help nonprofits get started?
Sure, yeah, of course.
Do you do pro bono work?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, not often?
Well, I, when I can.
When you
And, 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 you know, most of the, most of the clients that come to me are for-profit corporations. I mean, how am I going to, you know, why would I do pro bono work for a for-profit corporation?
No, 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 no.
No, non-for-profits, you know, that's fine. It depends what their mission is, really.
Okay.
If it's, if it's more community-oriented, yeah, I'm more likely to, to do pro bono work. I also have a much lower hourly rate for not-for-profits, and I charge for-profits. But on the other hand, I have for, you know, not-for-profit clients that are hugely, wildly financially successful, and they pay high salaries to their officers and their staff.
So you get your chunk of that, too?
Well, I mean, it's all, it's all, it's, it's, you know, it's all, it's all relative, and, and it depends on the complexity. You know, if you spend more time on something, then, because it's complex, then, you know, and the bills have to be paid. And, you know, I subscribe to the concept that, that if the work's worth doing, it's worth doing for money.
That's right.
Otherwise, I'd stay at home and putter around in my garden.
Do you, you live in this, obviously, in the city of Hudson, because you're elected on the, do you have an urban street that you're
No, I live in the suburbs of a two-mile confines. I actually live across the street from the prison. There's a, there's a medium, a security prison
I'll have to meet you there when I go.
Right, in, in the city, and I live
Yeah, on the outside.
Yeah, yes, I've never been on the inside. And it, from where I live, it looks like a farm, it's just fields and a barn.
It looks very nice.
Yeah.
Funny to say that, but it's
It is.
It's a very low-medium.
Yeah, it's a, it's, you wouldn't know necessarily it was there.
So you have your own little piece of
I do have a little house with a yard, a backyard, and, you know, it's fenced, and our dogs run around and do their thing there, and the cats, and, and, but there are townhouses. Most of, most of Hudson, I'd say, is more of an urban environment than where I live. And most of it is completely walkable.
Right.
I mean, you can certainly walk from one corner of the city to the other in about thirty minutes without, you know, breaking a sweat, or puffing and puffing at all. It's very small.
It's right on the river.
It's right on the river.
Do you have any plans to develop that river?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're working on it, but it's slow, for a variety of reasons.
Gives no meaning to Slow Money.
Yeah, there's no money. This is, it's the slowest of all monies. There's ownership, you know, the, there, the Hudson City waterfront is a deep-water port, and it's been an operating port since the American Revolution, or maybe slightly before that. And before the concept of waterfront as something unique and valuable, and that is the property of all citizens, took hold, anywhere, I guess. And so there are, most of the Hudson waterfront is privately held. And, and it's a working waterfront, it's industrial, so
So there's very little place to put an aquarium, or to put something that, like in a harbor, or something like that.
We're, we are marshaling the city's resources to put together the largest parcels we can through our economic development work. We have, we have both a
IDA.
An IDA and a development corporation. And they can do two different, you know, one's a not-for-profit, and one's basically an extension of city government. And so they can do different things, they have different remits. And we're working with both of those agencies. We've now, we have a RFP out for development of a historic building that's steps away from the water, and miraculously, on a slight rise of land, so that all of, all of the models that show how we're going to lose, you know, our waterfront's going to be encroached by rising, by, by rising water, this piece of property is actually going to stay above it. So we were exceptionally lucky, we're trying to get that developed now. We own several larger pieces that need remediation, brownfield remediation, but we're starting the work now, studying whether or not we can bond for certain levels, and we're looking at public-private partnerships for, for some of that, and this is all uncharted territory for us.
Do you work well with the mayor?
Well, we have a new mayor. Yeah, I, the new mayor, who was elected in January
Tiffany
Tiffany Martin-Hamilton.
New Hampshire.
She's, yeah, I got along with her, I've known her pretty much since I moved back, or moved to Hudson. She's a Hudson native, who moved back right around the time when I moved there, and we live very, she lives around the corner, she's a constituent of mine, and I, of course, am a constituent of hers.
And she's a Dem?
She is a Democrat, yes, and she's very progressive.
So what's the, I'm sorry to interrupt, but
Sure.
No, you have, how many members on the common council?
Eleven.
Eleven. How many are Democrats? How many are others?
Nine, or ten, nine Democrats, one NOP
No party.
No party, and one Republican. The president is Republican.
How'd that happen? Because he got more votes than
She
She got more votes than anyone else?
We had a spoiler kind of situation, where one of, somebody declared their candidacy, I think, sort of on, by the seat of his pants, without giving it a tremendous amount of thought. Halfway through the election
Dropped out.
Halfway through the election, he dropped out, but his, it was too late to remove his name from the ballot under the election law, which is, you know, crazy to begin with. So we ended up with him on the Democratic line. He got five hundred votes or something. The 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 other person who was running independent and had been endorsed by the Democratic Party when the first Dem dropped out, lost by three hundred votes. So he would have won and we would have had a vastly different city council. As it is, he he lost, so we have the city council we have.
But isn't it a a good thing to have a two-party system?
No question. It's better, I think. But but e- even the Democratic Party within the city of Hudson has very conservative members.
Yes.
And very liberal members. And so it's, there's almost as if there were more than one Democratic Party within the city.
Always is. That's what you have, just like the Jews.
I think so.
Shul I go to, there's a shul I don't go to and every Jew needs a shul they don't go to.
Yeah, I guess so.
Is there anything else that you'd like to bring up that we didn't know enough to ask you about or talk to you about that you wanted to? We need you to stick around in the Hudson City Council because you have so many things that you're looking to do and.
Well, I've tried to do some things and and some things we we've.
Run for mayor, then you'll be more.
No, I I I think that that is not something I would be very good at.
Well, you're young, so maybe in ten years.
I'm glad you think so. That's a great thing about Hudson is that at fifty-two, I am one of the youngest people I know. Not quite, but among my friends, I'm the youngest. So that's, that's, I like that. That makes me feel good. Well, I mean, we're, it's, there's a lot going on there in the city. And and we do have, we are working right now with a developer from Troy, has been very successful in Troy, doing really careful and and very respectful rehabilitation work of existing historical buildings and repurposing them. And so that group has come to Hudson and we're working with them.
You had that, the fish thing, the fish company or something in Hudson, right?
We did. It was in Greenport, which is actually the next town over, but because you couldn't find that big enough space to have a fish farm in Hudson.
That was owned by a Jewish guy.
It was owned by an Israeli company. An American branch of an Israeli company, the American branch is using the Israeli patents without paying the right royalties. You know, it all went up in legal smoke.
You had to do something about with all the fish.
Yes, they had to do something.
Filter fish.
They could have.
There was all these live fish that it was just left behind that they, you know.
And it wasn't good. I think it created a real problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, and now it's a fish farm again, but it's a freshwater fish farm, I think, this time.
Okay.
And 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 we'll see what comes of it, you know. Nothing, nothing that big in Hudson. We're working on a fifty-five room hotel.
Okay.
And, you know, boutique hotel, and and that is right up our alley, because our big problem in Hudson is not enough places for people who come in the wind, in the summer and the spring and the fall.
Where to stay?
Where to stay. There, there's just simply not enough rooms in the city. We've had one hotel open last year. We hope this hotel will open within a year.
Great.
And another hotel is in the works already on Warren Street. And then I'm, I heard through the grapevine that one more may be in development. And we just last night approved spending the last three point eight million, I think, that we needed to spend on our new court and police headquarters building. And that is going to free up some city-owned property on Warren Street. And buildings on Warren Street are now selling in excess of a million dollars. Ten years ago, not in excess of two hundred thousand. So it's really been quite a renaissance and it continues.
Wonderful. Well, keep up the good work.
Jonathan, thank you for coming on the Jewish.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
We wish you a lot of success in Hudson and also in your personal life, whatever your endeavors, your desires.
Thank you.
Continued success.
Thanks. Yeah, that was fun.